This committee shall be called to order. And when we recessed, we said we were going to come back pursuant to the agenda at 2:00 PM to publicly hear for the first time Bill Number 32-33COR. It's an act to amend 79601 of Article 6, Chapter 79, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new item 5 to 1515I2B of Article 5, Chapter 1, Title 5 GCA relative to the demolition of the Manuel F. Guerrero Administration Building in Hagana as a hotel occupancy tax hot-bond project. And this bill was sponsored by myself together with Senator Barnes and Speaker Wampat. I'd like to recognize and thank Senator Frank Guggan for being here, as well as Senator Mary Torres. Just to give you some, a little bit of a background, this bill was introduced at the request of the Guam Economic Development Authority in conjunction with Hagana Redevelopment and Restoration Authority, basically to identify -- oh, Mr. Chairman, would you like to join us? John Calvo? It's okay if you -- yeah, okay. Okay. So this bill was introduced to force a discussion on what should be done with the Manuel F. Guerrero Building. And as I said from the very beginning, and I reached out to members of Governor Guerrero's family and told them that even though whatever the fate of the building is, the namesake and the memory of that structure shall remain. In the meantime, I know Governor Calvo talks about using that area as a staging area for FestPAC 2016. If it's going to be an open space, if this bill should go forward, then certainly GIDEA will be mandated to provide some kind of monument. And Mr. Cameron, as President of the HRA, is in full support of something like this. Although this is a public hearing on a bill, I think it was more appropriate that we convene in a roundtable-style meeting so that we really express that we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with this building as a community. I understand that there's strong opposition to this legislation, and we'll deal with that opposition and address those concerns. And as you know, Governor Calvo is strongly in support of this bill because he's really wanting to construct the governor's Palacio through the efforts of the historic Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. So, you know, having said that, no, just because a bill is introduced doesn't mean that it's going to pass. I mean, I've had a couple of my own legislation either stay in committee because the community requires more discussion, or maybe I couldn't get eight votes, and it happens to all of us here in the legislature. But I want to hear from all of you. I want to also recognize Senator Spaldana and thank him for being here, as well as our Executive Director of the Legislature, Mr. Vince Ariola. Originally, when GIDEA first drafted this bill, they put a provision in here that the legislature shall forfeit its, or shall hand over its ownership of the property. And in discussions with GIDEA and with Hagana Redevelopment and Restoration Authority and Governor Calvo himself, they've all agreed that that, it's not necessary to that at this juncture, and I don't think it'll ever be necessary, but what will happen remains to be seen. So this bill does not reflect what GIDEA wanted, where the legislature was going to have to release the property to the executive branch for purposes of constructing the Palacio. So I guess as courtesy to Governor Guerrero's legacy, I'd like to hear from Al, your family, and I guess you're the family representative, right? Let's hear from him first, and then let's hear from GIDEA and Public Works. Okay. You guys, maybe take a moment to just go around the table and introduce yourselves, and then we'll hear from you, we'll hear from GIDEA, DPW, and then we'll hear from Mr. Cameron, and then we'll hear from -- so let me -- go ahead, Vince, I already introduced you, but go ahead again.
Thank you. Vince Ariola, Executive Director of the Guam Legislature. Good morning, good afternoon, everyone.
Ken Perez, and I'm here at the request of Senator Cruz.
Yvette Cruz, Acting Administrator, Guam EPA.
Al Guerrero, son of the late Governor Manu Guerrero.
Evelina LG Bonner, daughter of Governor Guerrero.
And it's really nice to have the children of Governor Guerrero here. When the bill was introduced, Senator Frank Guggan asked me to make sure that the family is on board every step of the way, and so we did that, and you're here today, and we'd like to hear from you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, please speak into the mic because...
Members of your committee and honorable senators, my name is Alfredo Dillion Guerrero. I am the eldest child of the late Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before your committee to testify on Bill Number 32-33 relative to the demolition of the Manuel F. L. Guerrero Administration Building. On behalf of the children of the late Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero, his sister, Mrs. Rosari Flores Antalab, and his late brother, Mr. Juan Flores Flores, we offer this testimony. The Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero Administration Building was so appropriately named, many very historical events and decisions affecting the people of Guam occur, and we met thereby him and the various governors of Guam whose office were to get in that building. Bill Number 32-33 proposed to demolish the Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero's Administration Building using tourist attraction fund. We are here not to oppose the plan as set forth, but rather to request this legislative body not to displace the importance of remembering and memorializing a son and leader of Guam that provide much-needed guidance to the people of Guam during very difficult times. He was not afraid to appear before a federal office in Washington, DC to request any form of assistance for Guam, be it financial or otherwise. Many of the programs that he began during his administration continue to be administered today. Because of his foresight, Guam economic growth began during his time, and we continue to see that today. We appear here today to request that upon demolition of the Administration Building, if nothing else is to be built in its place, that plaza be named the Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero Plaza. Again, Sido Smasi for the opportunity to give before you.
Sido Smasi. Absolutely. Let me just, let me -- Because we do get phone calls from the public from time to time saying, "Your audio's so bad."
Is it really, is it really that bad?
It's okay if people speak into the mic, so just want to make sure they do that.
I was just going through some of the stuff that my dad did, and I was there when President Kennedy appointed him up in Washington, DC. And so I've really gone through a lot with him. I never lived out here in Guam during his administration, but I know that he's helped a lot of people. And his first love was always for the island and the people. So he was, to me, was a very respected man of the people. He, you know, currently of that DOA building dedicated to him was also a house for all the other governors before him. So we know that that's like a trademark for that, an historical point for the governors. So we just, I believe it should be taken down because it's an eyesore. You know, we all know that, and repatching it is not going to do anything about it. It's got to be done away with or rebuilt, whatever it needs to be done. So I just, I just feel that in deserving of keeping his name as a tribute to all that he has done, I don't know where you want to do it, it doesn't matter, as long as you keep his legacy alive. And so that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. And that's why we're here today, to make sure that if we do anything, it's to continue honoring your dad's legacy, his memory, but also the historical perspective that the whole building had for all the other governors, the appointed and the elected.
Correct.
And he's the daughter of another governor.
Oh, yes, I know. And there's a lot of other people that are involved in this, you know, and I feel like it should be, remain a house for all the governors, past, present, and future.
Let's hear from the administration now.
Good afternoon, Chairman Respecho and members of the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 32-33, an act relative to the demolition of the Department of Administration Building in Hagana. In addition to our support of the intent of Bill 32-33, there are a couple of items we would like to mention for the legislature's recommendation or consideration. First, Section 2 of Bill 32 amends Section 79601 by removing the Manuel F. L. Guerrero Administration Building from the definition of Guam Capital District. Although we support this provision so that Governor Calvo and HRA can spearhead efforts of the revitalization and redevelopment of Hagana, we are not certain that the legislature's intent is to remove it under their control. Therefore, clarity in policy may be needed concerning jurisdiction over the land on which the Administration Building now sits. Secondly, the demolition of the Administration Building will remove the only facility honoring Governor Manuel Guerrero and his accomplishments. We encourage the legislature to honor the distinguished former governor in another way appropriate to his stature and contribution to the growth and development of Guam. I wish to thank the committee for the opportunity to provide this testimony.
Director Leon Guerrero.
Happy day, Chairman Respecho, members of the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this oral testimony in support of Bill 32-33, an act relative to the demolition of the Department of Administration Building in Hagana. I don't have a written, excuse me, testimony, so I'm just going to read off some of the notes that I've taken. Previously, in, earlier, there was a letter that was submitted by the department to the Executive Director Vince Ariola on April 17, 2012, by two predecessors of mine, Joanne Brown. And it basically had an inspection, a visual inspection report. I'm here to just add on to that and clarify a few things. A couple of days ago, I met with Tom Camacho, who's a structural engineer, and he and Vince Ariola and a couple of his staff members, we toured the facility, and this is the report that he's given to me. So I'm going to read off the email that he sent me. He's attached Chapter 66 of the Guam Building Law, which identifies that if repairs and renovations exceed 50% of the value of the building, all repairs, improvements, additions, et cetera, will have to comply with the current building code, and that's the international IBC code, 2009 requirements. This applies to Accessibility ADA, Architectural, Mechanical, Plumbing and Fire Code, Electrical Systems, and Structural. Based on his brief visual inspection of the former DOA building wing, the following are his preliminary comments. Number one, the buckle floor tiles at the ground level are not relative to any structural issues with the concrete slab. The buckle tiles resulted from poor installation and adhesion of the floor tiles to the existing concrete slab. Number two, no major structural deficiencies were noted on the exterior wall surfaces. Number three, structural shear walls were part of the original structure and are limited to the perimeter of the building. However, some interior CMU partition walls were erected within the interior spaces separating areas of, or creating rooms. No structural distress was observed on the interior CMU walls. Number four, the second floor showed sign, showed sign of pattern roof cracks between the building frames and the leaks throughout the entire length of the building. Number five, concrete cracks and sprawling was observed at the covered bridge walkway columns and roof slab located between the two building wings. It should be noted that the exterior roof surfaces and the building wings are not, were not inspected, and his general comments, based on all his observations, were, are this. He estimates that the structure was built in 1960, which makes the building over 50 years old. Based on the building code standards at the time of construction, the building will not meet current building code and may require an extensive amount of structural retrofit. He anticipates that the retrofit will involve the addition in exterior and interior reinforcement concrete shear walls, both on the ground floor and the second floors. Additionally, all concrete slabs, spalls will repair, will need repair with high-strength concrete patching material and pressure epoxy injection. In addition to the structural enhancements, the entire mechanical and electrical systems would have to be replaced and retrofitted to meet the current building code requirements. Architectural elements of the building, including windows and doors, would have to be replaced. Elevators would have to be installed, and ADA accessibility requirement had to be met. All the upgrades described above will, in his opinion, exceed the 50% value of the building and trigger the full code compliance. Renovation and retrofit costs are expected to be high and nearly approach, nearly approach for, nearly the approach cost for new construction. Given the age of the structure, maintenance will be a large factor of the remaining life of the structure, which could be very well, only an additional 10 to 15 years before major upgrades and major repairs are again required. Therefore, it's prudent for the government to consider a full replacement of the existing structure with the new structure that will function to today, today's modern, and last an additional 50 to 60 years. I've asked him what it would cost to retrofit, and he said it's between $300 and $350 square, $250 to $350 per square foot. And the total building is 70,000 square feet. So we're talking in excess of, just for retrofit costs, somewhere between 17.5 million to 25.5 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get into the heart of your testimony, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also Commissioner of Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. On behalf of the Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, we fully support the intent of this bill. The Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority finds that a true capital district incorporates all branches of our government, to include the legislative, the judicial, and the executive branches. Prior to World War II, the center and heart of Guam and the city of Hagana surrounding the Plaza de España and included all branches of government at that time. Should the HRA, as one of its basic mission, restore the center and heart of Guam, then the proposed Hagana Master Plan would provide for all branches to be co-located within the center and heart of Guam as a capital and cultural district. In summary, the Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority and its Board of Commissioners requests that the, request that we support this and that we pass this legislation. We do support the demolish of the property, but we do also encourage that we do rename it, as the family has so stated. And for the record, Mr. Chairman, my biological mother is Anna Flores, first cousins to Governor Manuel Guerrero. These folks across the table are my family, and I will support, and I will put every effort, as the Director of Hagana Restoration, to make sure that we restore and we comply your request today. And I love your recommendations, and we will put that in the master plan definitely, and I will encourage that. Sido Smasi.
Sido Smasi, Mr. Cameron. Ms. Cruz, Yvette? Are you submitting a position on behalf of EPA or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. He's also my father, which is what you're probably alluding to. I'm his youngest, Al, my brother's oldest. Happy day and good afternoon, Chairman Respecho and honorable senators. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on Bill 32-33COR. My name is Yvette Cruz, and I am currently the Acting Administrator of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. I am here today to provide testimony in support of Bill 32-33, an act relative to the demolition of the Manuel F. Guerrero Administration Building in Hagana. Recently, experts from Guam EPA conducted a walkthrough inspection of the Manuel F. Guerrero Administration Building in Hagana. Additionally, the testing of materials and substances found present in the building concluded in potential human health and environmental risks, such as lead-based paint, asbestos in tiles, and metal safe boxes, mold, rear projector films and canisters, uncontained and possibly ignitable reactive and toxic, fluorescent bulbs possibly containing mercury, and fluorescent bulb fixtures. Due to the lack of water flow into the building, no water samples were available for a bacteriological and lead analysis. To some degree, employees can be protected against these potential risks, such as asbestos exposures, if they wear respirators that will remove some of the asbestos from the air they breathe, and if they wear personal protective clothing, such as disposable coveralls. But these safeguards are partial. The respirators must be fit-tested and properly maintained, and even the protective clothing is a hazardous waste that requires special precautions for disposal. Furthermore, this legislative proposal would potentially benefit our community by ensuring the containment and proper disposal of these hazardous materials that pose significant human health and environmental risks. In conclusion, Guam EPA remains committed to working with our legislative partners in the cleanup of hazardous work sites to protect human health and the environment. Upon request, the agency would be happy to provide its detailed findings as the committee continues its deliberations on the legislative proposals. Sido Smasi for allowing Guam EPA to provide testimony on this current legislative proposal.
Thank you. Can you go ahead and submit those detailed findings?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I'll make the request now. Okay. Mr. Perez, who is going to read testimony that was prepared by Vice Speaker Cruz, and then I'd like to then recognize Senator Cristobal to also offer her testimony. Ken, just pull the mic, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chairman. I haven't been here for a while, so I can get mixed up with titles. I'm here to read this testimony from Senator Vice Speaker BJ Cruz, and he asked me to, he asked me to read it because we're awfully good friends and we're close. We both worked in that building. And he begins, if I could begin. Dear Chairman Respecho, I begin this testimony with a question for the committee, my fellow colleagues, and my dear people of Guam. What if Independence Hall, that hallowed place in Philadelphia, were a declaration of the universal principles of freedom and democracy, was adopted by a group of farmers, businessmen, preachers, and jurists in defiance of foreign rule, and ultimately changed the course of American history? What if this architectural centerpiece considered the birthplace of the United States of America were to be condemned and razed to the ground in six months? And what if after the demolition of the building that served as the cradle of the American Revolution, a monument to King George were to stand in its place? How many would publicly support this act? How many of my colleagues would cast a yes vote in its favor? While I cannot be with you today, I take comfort in knowing that none of you would advocate the destruction of such an important piece of American history. From our earliest days of schooling, we each became children of the American Revolution. From our history lessons, we know that Washington is the father of America, that Jefferson's pen was the founding instrument of the American dream, and that James Madison conceived a form of constitutional democracy that would become a beacon for the free world. As is the case for millions of Americans from each generation to the next, the thought of the willful destruction of this nation's sacred places should disturb us regardless of our respective color, creed, political status, or place of birth. Perhaps what is somehow eclipsed by our grand American legacy is an even older yet equally important history, a history that if not taught and remembered will be torn down and reduced to rubble. It is in this spirit that I respectfully oppose Bill Number 32-33, an act relative to the demolition of the Manuel F. Guerrero Administration Building in Hagana. It was the historic presidential appointment of Governor Joseph F. Flores in 1960 that returned, at least in some small measure, self-governance after 400 years of colonial rule. It took another 10 years for us to earn the right to free and fair election of our island leader. In 1970, that man was Governor Carlos G. Camacho. By now, some of you must be asking what this history lesson has to do with the proposed demolition of the Guerrero Building. Here is my answer. This was the place from which Governor Manuel Guerrero planted the seeds of Guam's prosperity and signed into law the creation of the Guam Economic Development Authority, the same entity that now advocates the destruction of the building which bears Guerrero's name. This was the place from which Governor Carlos Camacho, Guam's first elected governor, stemmed the brain drain of the early '70s, shepherded us through the beginnings of our tourism industry, and the place to which, and the place to which he returned after visiting our sons one Christmas Day in Vietnam. This was the place from which a young man in his early twenties became legal counsel to Governor Ricardo Bernaldo, the place from which that governor secured 367 million to rebuild Guam after the devastation of Super Typhoon Pamela, and the place from which Governor Paul Calvo welcomed the beginning of the unparalleled growth of Guam in the 1980s. This was the place in which a young Judy Wampat was photographed standing at the side of her father as he, Antonio Borja Wampat, took his oath of office as Guam's first elected representative to Congress. This was the place in which a first-generation immigrant through passion, grit, and hard work defined a future for herself, starting as a schoolteacher, working her way to become superintendent, and now is the freshman senator who chaired the Committee on Education. And perhaps it was the place where a young girl saw her father's work in service of others and found that same passion within herself, answering the call to be our people's voice in the halls of this legislature, and maybe one day become another of Guam's first. This brings us to a, and if I may just add, there are a lot of senators that have connections to that building. Senator Frank Blas, his father began his work as Director of Commerce in that building. There are others. Senator Dennis Rodriguez, his father started work there. This brings us to a central question. Why with so many pressing issues facing us, is it still important to preserve the past? Or, as a taxpayer put it to me once, why should I give my money to you for preservation and not human services like a soup kitchen or a homeless shelter? I believe the answer to that question lies in how preservation addresses one of our most fundamental needs. Of course, and arguably, food and shelter are among the most essential requirements for human survival. But once physiological and safety needs are met, as framed in Maslow's hierarchy, community or the sense of belongingness becomes priority. Directly serving the human need for community, the preservation of physical history binds people to one another and to the past. These artifacts remind us of the trials of our past, and we take solace in knowing that we are not the first generation to face economic hardship, or environmental decline, or an educational system that doesn't always seem worthy of our children. We are not the first to wonder about the character of our political discourse, or to concern ourselves about Guam's place in the world. Our ancestors also struggled with these things. They faced great challenges and great opportunities, and they survived and even thrived. We can too. Therefore, I ask each of you, why would we destroy the place where we achieved our first real measure of self-governance after 400 years, only to replace it with a towering monument to our colonizers, both Spanish and American? Why would we honor a place in which we, the Semoral people, were servants to a Spanish crown, at the cost of dismantling the place in which became statesmen? Why shouldn't the Manuel F. Guerrero Building continue to stand witness not only to the history of the Gamanian people, but also to the boundless promise of our future? I submit to you that an alternative exists, that those of you willing to do so can help Governor Calvo rebuild the governor's palace as he desires, while preserving the place from which the first elected governors of Guam led our people. This is not an unattainable feat. The proposed reconstruction of the governor's palace, or Palacio, and its conversion to a public museum were projects conceived by the late Governor Ricardo Bernaldo and was espoused by the nonprofit organization, the Palace Restoration Association of Guam, formed and led by then-first Lady Madeline Z. Bernaldo. As a former PRAG member, I am intimately familiar with its objective. As a former P R A G. member, I am intimately familiar with its objective, none of which, I repeat, none of which include or entail the demolition of the Guerrero Building. Instead, P R A G., recognizing that the restoration of the original footprint of the Palazazo did not require the destruction of the Guerrero Building, proposed to integrate the building into the assembly of existing historic structures within the Plaza de España. So why is there this such an overwhelming desire to move so quickly now? Having spent my entire adult life in service to the people of Guam, I have learned certain immenable liberties, among which is the difficulty in deterring a popular term-limited governor from achieving a goal he believes is central to his legacy. Government employees will fall in line, boards and commissions become malleable, bipartisan cooperation abounds, regulations loosen, and maybe, just maybe, we all move faster than we should. In a letter from then-director of the Department of Public Works, Joanne Brown, to the executive director of the Guam Legislature dated April seventeenth, twenty twelve, we find that CIP engineer R.C. Von Buena, joined by Guam Department of Education Safety Administrator Belush Williams, inspected the Guerrero Building and found that it did not exhibit any structural damage or significant joint cracks. The special reinforced machinary shear wall for the ground and second floor showed no shear-cracking defect, and that the horizontal vertical connection showed no separation and no cracks at the openings. It was this administration's own assessment that affirmed the building's structural integrity and recommended a general upgrading and renovation of the building, not its wholesale demolition. Less than three years later, Bill thirty-two thirty-three asserts the contrary. The Guerrero Building has serious structural, mechanical, electrical, environmental issues that create significant safety hazards and render the building unfit for further occupancy. As was mentioned by the chairman of the Committee on Rules, this bill was drafted by Gita and introduced on its behalf. Therefore, two questions come to mind. What justification has Gita provided to make such statements, and why would Gita take interest in the destruction of the Guerrero Building? While I can appreciate the desire of any governor to achieve a lasting legacy and the eagerness with which his agencies will perform to achieve this goal, why should the legacy of one governor cause the destruction of a building that had been witnessed to so many other legacies, including that of its very own father? Despite running the risk of being misquoted or misunderstood, I make that statement cognizant of its gravity and consequence. I offer it out of respect and in the hope that we are not forced to choose between a Spanish governor's palace and the place in which we first governed ourselves. I think it is also important that we understand the history behind the name that has adorned this historic building for over twenty-five years. I, introduced by then Senators Carl T. Secretaris, Ted Nelson, and Joe T. Sinagastine, in the twentieth Guam Legislature enacted on October sixteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, Public Law twenty-one oh-two renamed the Administration Building, the Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero Building, after a man who began his life in public service as a messenger to later ascend to become the Magallahio of Guam. Born on October twenty-fifth, nineteen fourteen, Manuel F. L. Guerrero first joined the government in nineteen thirty as a messenger, more than likely in the Palazazo itself. He held numerous positions in government, including administrator of the Guam Memorial Hospital, special assistant at the Commercial Port of Guam, deputy director of the Department of Land Management, Assistant Secretary of Guam, member of the eleventh Guam Congress, Senator of the first Guam Legislature, and Secretary of Guam before serving as the second Chamorro governor of Guam from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen sixty-nine, the first to serve for a term of more than four years. Under Governor Guerrero's leadership, our island saw the creation of the Guam Telephone Authority, the Guam Power Authority, the Commercial Port of Guam. At that time, they were all under P U A.G., the first Guam International Air Terminal, and the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, and he was instrumental in upgrading the College of Guam to that of a university and a land-grant college. Perhaps foreshadowing today's events, the committee record for Public Law twenty-one oh-two indicates that a promise was made. Testifying in support of the measure, Governor Guerrero's family asked what would happen if the building bearing his name would be demolished. At the time, Chairman Nelson promised that Governor Guerrero's name would succeed to any building in its place. Think of the irony for a moment. Now in the midst of Mess Chamorro, just two days after Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day, Gita asks us to either ignore that promise altogether or keep that promise by destroying the building in which Manuel Guerrero was governor, only to then rebuild the palace in which he was a messenger. And there are other ironies to appreciate as well. I worked in the Guerrero Building. I saw men of vision and purpose wrestle with the most challenging questions of that time, questions we are still trying to answer today. Who are we? How can we be? We leave behind something solid and tangible so that our children can build something better. I worked there, and for many years to follow, I drove by watching that place fall into neglect and disrepair. I did nothing, and in so doing, allowed this day to come. For that, I am responsible, but I have the chance to fix that now. I know that some have said the cost to repair the historic building is prohibitive. Bill thirty-two thirty-three claims that the cost of rehabilitation to bring the building to current uniform building code standards does not warrant the significant investment of public funds necessary to extend the useful life of the facility. Yet, in the last four years alone, the government of Guam has committed to investing over two hundred million dollars into converting a fifty-year-old military barracks facility into what was supposed to be a temporary school. Now we are saddled by the cost of leasing a permanent high school that has Guam taxpayers paying upwards of eight million dollars per year. A renovation and rehabilitation, the same action called forth by the administration's own experts, would include fifty-three thousand square feet of office space and could potentially save millions of dollars in rental costs to the people of Guam. Destroying this building makes absolutely no financial or historical sense, especially while other alternatives exist. The argument of the Guerrero Building must be raised to accommodate the Festival of Pacific Arts, FestPAC, is akin to saying our crime rate would decrease if only we threw every man, woman, and child on Guam in prison. Ipal Beach, Hospital Point, the Leo Palace, and the fields between George Washington High School and University of Guam could be alternative to this either-or plan before us now, a plan that would rob Guam of a valuable economic and cultural resource, and in so doing, defile the very spirit of FestPAC itself. Instead, I believe Governor Eddie Calvo, like Governor Batalho before him, could support a plan that rebuilds a replica of the Palazazo in its exact specification as it once stood, while preserving and restoring the Guerrero Building, not one, not one that destroys a historic site, only to replace it with an enlarged and overachieved version of the Palazazo. In fact, archaeological excavations conducted in the nineteen eighties found that the well-preserved foundation of the Palazazo and the ancient Chamorro Lati post holes underneath such foundations. These findings inform them that Spanish structures were built on top of the remains of our Lati-period Hagatna village dating that, dating back to the pre-Lati period, two thousand B.C. to nine hundred eighty, of our Chamorro history. These findings illustrate the rich history of our capital of Hagatna and how, throughout the years, decades, and even centuries, our people have preserved against all odds, persevered against all odds. But why shouldn't our complex history acknowledge the role of our Spanish governors, our federally-appointed governors, and our first-elected governors? Inasmuch as the, as our history has been steeped in tragedy and triumph, every bit of it, no matter how painful, is the story of us. Just as certain individuals carve out the historic significance and importance for replicating the Palazazo, even while knowing that the foundation, the foundation of the Palazazo rests atop our Chamorro ancestors' vestiges, so too is it imperative that same level of thinking and respect be afforded the Guerrero Building in its role in Guam and Chamorro history. One hundred years from now, a son or daughter of Guam will look back on the history of our people. She will know that we persevered through the heavy yoke of colonial rule, survived the crossing heel of tyranny, overcame natural disasters, and survived a world war. He will know that we widened the circle of economic opportunity, found our place in the world, and preserved our unique way of life. She will know these things, and like Washington or Jefferson, Adams or Madison, she will know that the forefathers of our governor, she will see, she will know the forefathers of our government, she will see the place in which we worked, they were they worked, and she will know that no matter the challenges that face her generation, she can rise to meet them because her people always have. I urge you to slow down, to strike a balance, and accept this, that this is not an either-or situation. Table this bill for the roundtable hearings originally promised by this committee, and give each of us a chance to preserve the history of our forbears as well as our colonizers. Benjamin J.F. Cruz. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, for reading the Vice Speaker's very thought-provoking testimony. Senator Cristobal?
Sidus Massey, Honorable Rory Respecho, Chairman of the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and American Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District. Half a day, Sen. Presidente Respecho, Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Speaker Judy Wampat, and members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to present testimony on Bill thirty-two dash thirty-three, the demolition of the Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero Building in Hagatna, also known as the Department of Administration Building, to those of us who frequented the building for one reason or another in the days of the Guam Department of Education and the Department of Administration. For the record, my name is Hope Alvarez Cristobal. I am from Tamooning Village, and I'm here to oppose Bill thirty-two dash thirty-three C O R. that will destroy a Guam historic property. Over the years, I have been concerned at the rate and the destruction of evidences of our existence and history as a people, one that is non-self-governing today, a people who once enjoyed sovereignty in our homeland, and critically important, we are a people who have yet to write our history and about what makes us distinct as a people in this homeland. To do this is to continue to regard with respect the tangible evidence of our Chamorro identity and history. Bill thirty-two dash thirty-three C O R. proposes the destruction of the historically significant Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero Administration Building, what I feel is a discriminate and reckless act that is anti-Chamorro history and cultural heritage. For many years, I worked to protect the burial sites of our people, many of whom lived in the second-largest Chamorro settlement in the seventeenth century in Tumon, not far from where I live today. My experiences regarding the preservation of those burial sites have been the result of the government's failure to inform the public through the D P W. permitting process, where the Historic Preservation Review Board is mandated to make public announcement inviting public comment on the impacts to a burial site or an important historic property on their meeting agenda. It was through this process that people like myself participated in articulating the purposes and procedures for preservation. My other experiences relate to the historic properties that were slated for destruction as collateral damage in the building of hotels at Matapang Beach, at Goknya, where the Nico Hotel now stands, at the former Vegeta Hotel, and at Tomhom Proper, where the Hyatt Hotel now stands. I learned about the desecrations and destruction to the publicly-announced meeting agenda of the board. This was how it was. This review process existed for public comment and input on impacts of these important historical properties. And if our concern seems to be ignored, it was essential to get the word out by informing and exposing to the media any anomalies that prevent the preservation and respect of our sacred burial grounds. If it appears that there may be collusion, we went to the court and got an injunction to prevent the project from destroying the burial grounds of our ancestors. It is this kind of commitment to the preservation of our heritage that I and other preservationists espouse too, even today, to ensure that the evidence of our identity is respected and not destroyed. Another experience was the historic Rosario House, built in the eighteen hundreds, right here in the Hagatna, Hagatna Historic District. After discovering through our network of historic preservationists that the building is slated for demolition, I filed a complaint with the state Historic Preservation Officer, and the complaint procedurally placed the Rosario House in their meeting agenda for board discussion and public comment. I was able to study and visit the structure, and presented to the board my opposition to its destruction and recommend its preservation because of its historic significance. In this way, I and others who were able to provide definite information about the structure participated and were able to help in preserving it. The process worked, and today, the building finally will be restored by the government of Guam funds. Yet another historic property issue was the proposal to mail out the over three hundred human remains of our ancestors excavated, excavated at Goknya in mailboxes to be sent off-island for study. The Historic Review Board placed this issue in its meeting agenda, and that was what alerted me that the board with members who have technical knowledge in the field of architecture, history, planning, archaeology, and education was able to discuss and vote to deny the request to mail our ancestors' remains after comments were allowed to be heard. As an activist, a former University of Guam history professor, I am deeply concerned with the erasing of our Chamorro historic properties, the erasing of place names, and the erasing of evidences of our history as a people of Guam. This is a colonial practice that needs to be abated. Our historic properties hold meaning to our people, and it is through these meanings and connections that we construct the legitimacy to create and build community today. We must cherish and preserve them for the memories and history that lift us up and for the edification of our people. And with this caring attitude embodied already in our historic preservation laws, our yet-to-be-written historic narrative will not be empty of substance associated with our heritage, in this case, the Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero Administration Building. Here we are, fifteen years into the twenty-first century, and rather than studying its historicity, our people are faced with a bill to demolish a property that has been named by law to honor Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero. This property has been listed in Guam's inventory of historic properties but had not gone through the well-established process, formally listing it after detailed studies of its eligibility in the Guam and National Register of Historic Places. Why is this historic property never placed on the Guam Historic Preservation Review Agenda for proper historic preservation review due to the impending proposal to destroy it? Did the members of the board not want to discuss this obviously important historical property? Is it a foregone conclusion of theirs that public comment is not needed today? Is the board influenced by its chairman, who had previously publicly stated his unilateral personal preference for demolition of this historic property over the restoration of the Spanish Palazazo? Why is this historic property treated differently? I believe that the board chairman may have prematurely made a decision undermining the historic review process rather than allowing the board members and the Chappelle staff to provide their expert opinions, the reason for being selected to be on that board in the first place, and rather than allowing public comment. This is alarming. This action, the proposed destruction without review, compels the public to request a review by the Department of Interior's National Park Service Western Regional Office to verify whether the action violates federal guidelines in the treatment of historic properties, something that may endanger the yearly Historic Preservation Fund grant due to possible non-compliance. I find it peculiar that the historic preservation process of nominating sites to the Guam and National Register of Historic Places is mysteriously being bypassed by your proposed legislation. This proposed legislation may be eliminating the normal historic preservation review of Guam's historic property and other historic properties, the Governor Manuel F. L. Guerrero Building. My dear colleagues, colleagues, if I do not convince you to kill this bill, do the right thing and honor our heritage by preserving this building, otherwise you may have usurped the existing process of historic properties in Guam and eliminates public review and scrutiny. I want to reiterate again my concern about the manner by which this historic property is being handled by the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. The legislature in its infinite wisdom must not allow the selective application of only some attributes of the landscape as important and erase the structural representation of an important historical period of our early political development, because this legislature must take responsibility for the deafening silences of what is not made significant. must take responsibility for the deafening silences of what is not made significant or important in our development as a people, something yet to be written about, the emergent experiences of a non-self-governing people that would otherwise be showcased and pronounced by preserving the Manuel F.L. Guerrero Building. Why would anyone want to diminish or erase this significant period in our history and its tangible reminder? Why? This scenario reveals a kind of dishonesty in dealing with our history. If demolition is approved, GIDA and the governor's office will now take over the project. Who will manage the building proper and the grounds of the Plaza de España? It is not in the bill. What are we trying to hide with this bill? That you are turning over the Palacio to the governor's office? Because that is what appears behind the words here. This bill makes it look like there's collusion in the destruction of this historic structure at all costs. The historic preservation process is usurped. You have quick office spaces available and maybe even an exhibit facility. The building is historical, and it can be rehabilitated. Where is our people of Guam's real estate planner? Have a legislative repository, a requisite place for a certified archival depository for the legislative branch, similar to the congressional records of the U.S. Congress, been considered? Hafa! Think of the options and opportunities for alternative uses. My dear senators, look around and open your eyes. You can see what little have remained over time, from the ravages of colonial occupation of a one sovereign people, a war not of our doing, clearing and grading for urbanization that have changed our physical landscape as well as our cultural landscape, the near-total destruction of Hagatna, the desecrations and destruction of our ancestors' sacred burial grounds. The question that we should be asking ourselves is, what do we have left that have significantly contributed to our identity as an emerging people, or that could contribute to our national pride as a people, or that could enhance and enlighten the history of our people? Is the historicity of the Governor Manuel F.L. Guerrero Building and all the activities that make it significant historically, is it worth preserving? I say yes. The building is not empty, nor is it a dead space. Know your history and preserve our historical sites and allow the keeping of our historical integrity. Do not be a part of erasing that history within and through the final plans that will now take up the significance of the Palacio. Make a stand for a decolonized history, for a better future for our people to the depiction of our struggles as an emergent people, a people yearning to restore our sovereignty. Imagine a tour guide discussing our people's history. That narrative will go something like, "And here is the building in which the first-appointed Chamorro governor's office was housed, the first-elected Chamorro governor's office was located, the first political status commission was signed into law in this building, the post-war local civilian government was implemented through this building, the ideas of emerging from a colonial past were formulated where the first Chamorro Land Trust Commission was signed into law. In fact, the Guam Historic Preservation Act was signed into law in that building in Public Law 12-126." This is the place that Chamoros after World War II took positions as governors, lieutenant governors, directors, surveyors, accountants, treasurers, civil service managers, budget directors, education directors, chief of staff, secretaries, public servants, refuge and training ground to serve our people and learn the business of administering and governing ourselves. And this is just a listing of some historic events that took place in the building. I recall at the time I became a Miss Guam in 1967, two years before Governor Carlos's term ended, Chilang Bamba, Tita Soder, Tina Perez, Margaret Jones, and bless their souls for everyone who have passed, but Margaret is still here with us today. How these strong women of their time made it a rule that before anyone leaves off island to represent our country, that we pay our respects to Guam's highest official so that he can impart his wisdom and blessings for the sake of our dignity as a people. I recall also at the time how Governor Camacho requested that our group pay respects to the Air Force General, General Crum, and off we went to do just that. You know, after our visit with General Crum, he took his last flight over Vietnam and never came back alive. I was 21 years old then, and I thought I was in my prime. But my dear senators, my prime, our prime, your prime comes when we, you, can respond in a way as to enhance and to promote our people, our national pride, and our identity as a people whose history is worth saving, worth preserving for our progeny. So how can you adapt this old building to the needs of our modern lives? Well, we can begin by thinking of how the government can save money in rentals. You have about 50,000 square feet of office space that can be rental space that will probably give us millions of dollars in savings in the three years. About $1.50 per square feet rental in Hagatna today? Now, why can't this space be used for your legislative offices rather than rent? It's a win-win savings for the people of Guam and the legislature, where millions of dollars have been spent for rental using the people's tax dollars. That didn't require any scientific computation to figure out. Maybe we should also ask ourselves, who could possibly benefit monetarily from the demolition of 50,000 square feet of office space, something that we now have, that we could use? Anyone that you know of? Situs Massey, please preserve the Manuel F.L. Guerrero Building. Thank you very much.
Situs Massey, thank you also for your very thought-provoking testimony. Okay. You know, the vice speaker was correct. At the time, this, the 20th Guam Legislature, Bill Number 424 was introduced by the individuals he named. He named a former governor and former senator, former speaker Carl T.C. Gutierrez, former speaker Jotis, a former vice speaker Ted S. Nelson, and a former speaker Jotis Noguestein. And we have the committee report here, and it says, "Next, the chairman called on the family of Governor Guerrero to submit testimony. Ms. Delfina Leon Guerrero accompanied by her children Manuel F. Guerrero Jr., Evelina L.G. Bonner, and Alfredo..." Alfredo, right? He guesses a typo. "Fredero D. Leon Guerrero testified in support of Bill Number 424. Mrs. Guerrero thanked the sponsor of the bill for recognizing the accomplishments of her late husband. At this time, Manuel Guerrero Jr. expressed his concern that should the current building be demolished and a new one constructed with a name change carry on. He was assured by the committee chairman that regardless of what happens to the current building, the name change will ultimately follow once the new building is constructed." So this is, certainly, this committee, this has to be memorialized in the committee report and possibly amended into the bill after we decide what to do with the bill. So I guess we're trying to find some common ground, and the first common ground is that the, although the building, if it were to be demolished, that the namesake will continue and the legacy will carry on. That's the first thing that I think we can, we can try to move toward an agreement. The second thing I want to point out is the testimony from the vice speaker and from Senator Cristobal, who really provides some kind of insight and guidance with respect to how we should proceed. You raised a lot of very important issues. GIDA and administration and the, and Mr. Cameron's group and the Hagatna Redevelopment and Restoration Authority certainly should have an opportunity at this time to respond to those concerns raised by both the vice speaker and Senator Cristobal. And then I would offer my thoughts after that, that I want to first give you an opportunity. If you reflect on what the vice speaker pointed out with, with the inconsistencies in, in how the bill represented that it's not financially feasible based on the structure, the current environmental condition, and all the electrical work that needs to be done. And what really put a bump in the road was the letter that then-director Joanne Brown submitted to our executive director, saying that based on their ocular inspection, that there is, that the building is structurally sound, that any leaks are attributed from drillings in the walls resulting from having to install air conditioners and, and window frames and... But, but historically, the legislature has been the landlord to that property, and for all the executive branch offices that occupied that property, the legislature was never given any rental money. The idea and belief that we're one government, so we maintain the grounds, do the best we can. But unfortunately, the current condition of the building, I think if we're going to decide on what the second common ground is, is we can't let that building continue in its present state and dishonor the legacy of not only former Governor Guerrero, but all of the previous governors who served our island and what that building represents. So if you notice in the testimonies from vice speaker and Senator Cristobal, they're not saying, "Don't do anything." They're not saying, "Leave the building as is." They're saying, "Maybe we can find some kind of common ground where we could bring that building to its former glory, but also incorporate what Governor Calvo wants to do with the Palacio." And, and that's where I think I'd like to focus our discussion. I know that the governor has showed us plans that were already, there's drawings, right, and renditions of what this Palacio would look like. And I was thinking about...
I haven't seen, I'm sorry, I haven't seen those drawings.
Yeah, I was thinking about giving...
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking about providing an opportunity for that presentation to be made. But understand, though, that if I had that presentation made, it'll seem like it's a foregone conclusion. And I understand how the community moves, and so this is a very sensitive, highly politically-charged issue. And if you're wondering why there's no presentation being made as to what is going to become of that space, it's because we're not there yet.
Right, right. And, you know, and one of the concerns that I have too, Senator, is back in 2013, when DOA actually moved out, and so that was like two years ago.
There was a mass exodus. DOA moved out, DOE moved out.
DOA moved out, right. And I think the headlines in the news was, you know, DOA moves out, homeless moves in. And from what the governor has told me, a lot of times that he passes by there in the evening, he sees the, the homeless people there. What my concern is, is, you know, asbestos, a lot of the buildings prior to 1975, that were built in 1975, they do have asbestos. And, you know, asbestos is in, they're in cement corrugated sheets, they're in flat, cement's flat sheets, they're in pipeline wraps, there's also vinyl floor tiles. So, you know, if the tiles and all that stuff is cracking, you know, and stuff, and the homeless is in there, I think we need to consider some of the liability that the government may, or the legislature, because it's under the legislature, may have. So that's what I mean. One of my main concerns is, if that's the case, if we have children from academy that go over there and visit, and there's asbestos around there, you know, what is, is there liability in government of Guam, I would think?
DPW testified to the fact that it would cost a lot of money to retrofit that building, and the cost that it would take would put, you were not here yet, Senator Hope, but it would, it would put us over the 50% threshold. And that, and because that threshold exceeded the 50% of the cost for the rehabilitation, then all the current codes would have to kick in, costing much more money. So I think that's where GIDA is coming from with respect to that it's not financially sound to...
And, you know, I'm not a construction manager or anything, but if, if we were to redo all the electrical and break the walls and change the pipes and allow for larger wires to go through, just to, to, you know, to bring it up to code, I'm not sure, sure what that would do to the structure itself.
And how much money do we have in the hot bond, the balance?
Right now, I mean, it's just the demolition. We're not looking at building the Palacio or whatever it's, it's planned for by HRA. What we want to do is just use whatever savings in some of the projects with the hot bonds, with the exception, of course, the museum. All the other projects allow for us to use savings, and this bill here would allow us to use the savings to at least first go in, take a look at, you know, the asbestos, the environmental issues, and then we would, if we have additional funding, we can go ahead and proceed with the demolition.
Yeah, and that building was built in two phases, right? And so I, Mr. Frederick, can correct me if I'm wrong, but the vice speaker saying that maybe, maybe we can have both. We can have the, some semblance of the current building and the Palacio, and the, the building parallel to O'Brien Drive is the one that could be demolished. So you...
Yeah, and somebody mentioned to me, Senator, I mean, just mentioned to me the other day because they know that we were coming to the hearing, and they mentioned to me, and just looking at the structure of the building, that it was originally a barracks. I'm not sure how true that is, you know, I mean, yeah, I just heard, somebody told me, oh, yeah, they even looked back, it was originally a barracks and then became...
No, no, it was built for that purpose.
Okay, that's what somebody told me, so I'm not sure. So that was built for the governor's office then, right?
And then we have written testimony from Joe Canata, from the Guam Preservation Trust. He says, "I submit to you today a written testimony to offer some solutions to address historic preservation issues regarding Bill 32-33. The spirit of preservation can be captured in various forms, formats, and capacity to preserve and protect the essence of our cultural heritage. An interpretive exhibit and a memorial portraying the significance, historical events in and around the building are two of many formats to present and educate our people and visitors of the cultural, of our cultural heritage. Communities preserve historic structures for the structure itself is architecturally significant. In conclusion, the trust recognized the intention of this bill concerning the building's significant safety hazard and would like to work with this body and the community to preserve the significant historical events and the great leaders that once worked in this building." I guess he's telling us to preserve the building.
And if I may, wherever we're located right now, the Preservation Trust is, is in the Lujan House. Okay, the reason, the reason why that building exists is because when the Lujan family was going to sell that property, when we found out, when the legislature found out about it, Senator, the late Senator Frank Santos, he stepped in, talked with the Lujan family, and agreed, made a, negotiated a land exchange so that the government could keep the Lujan House. The significance of the Lujan House is not because of the structural or the architecture of the thing, the significance of the, is of the people who attended school there. I mean, everybody that was anybody in Guam history went to school in the normal school, the Guam Normal School, which is what it was called. And that was the reason for exchanging property and debt for that property in order to preserve that. What I think Vice Speaker Cruz is saying is that, let's take on what Senator Cristobal is saying, let's, let's pull back a little bit, and so we can study just exactly what we're proposing here and look at the significance of the building. You know, it appears, and I'm saying this as a private citizen, not with any reference to BJ, because he'd probably kill me if I, he knows. But every time, it seems that every time we have money, we're in a rush to spend it. So in this sense, in finot Chamorro tas esteni fani macakata, that the studia, let's study this thing and review it, and instead of just, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing something to fix the building or to, if, if it's really that structurally unsafe, then to taking it down. When the Latoya Freedom Foundation was going to build, was going to build the Latoya Freedom, proposed to build Latoya Freedom in Adalu, one of the concerns that Governor Camacho at that time, Felix, one of his concerns was that the building may not be structurally sound, because some engineers from, from DPW went down there, and they had concerns. So we bought in, we asked that it be evaluated by the Army Corps of Engineers. They came back with a full-blown study and said that there's nothing wrong with the building, it's sitting on solid coral, it's not going to fall down. And so, you know, we had, we had the scientific, well, expert opinions, if you will, that the building, that we could use the building. I think that in this case, because of some of the points that Tom Camacho brought out is very, very salient, but at the same time, some of the points that were brought out by Joanne Brown's people is also very important to take into consideration. So maybe perhaps if, if, if GIDA has the money and they're itching to spend it, maybe what you could do is hire... you could do is hire an A&E firm to come out with a final evaluation on the building, and see if it's really structurally safe. You know, we talk about asbestos. If asbestos was, and I know it's dangerous...
Not only in A&E, but like a feasibility study, and so we could weigh those, you know, costs associated with rehabilitation versus...
Yeah.
Well, I know, it's for the structure, they're saying, I believe they're saying the, the building is structurally sound. Now they're saying that, the Public Works has said that, but what GIDEA is representing through the bill is, it's not just a matter of the structure, but to retrofit it and to bring it up to code, will, will put that, you mentioned, how many million? Yeah. Can you speak into the mic, 'cause, yeah, you did mention...
My understanding is that if it's 70,000 square, square feet, then you're talking about, for the high end 350, that's 25.5 million, and the 250 would be, the low one would be 17.5. To do a structural analysis, I've also asked Tom Camacho to give me what it'll cost for us to do that. He's saying that, you know, just for the structural analysis, costs about 25 grand. And then if we, what we need to do, as you're saying, a full, full, full report on architect, electrical, mechanical, and those investigations gotta be the reports, we're talking roughly about $75,000.
And how much would the Palacio cost? Is there a preliminary, Senator Torres?
You know, in listening to everybody, we've got very rational minds here. I mean, people that are speaking from an emotional and historical point are also very rational, as rational as the structural aspect of it. But what I wanna point out to everybody as we look at this, I clearly have a vested interest in wanting to see this historical building preserved because of my father being Governor Camacho, but, but I'm not making that my charge. What I wanna point out to everyone is, we set precedent already in this body, when we rallied behind that Guam Legislature building, and we invested incredible monies to restore what is, what would have not as much of a usefulness as, as it does a historical usefulness, a practical usefulness versus a historical usefulness. And so when you, you know, when you talk about allocating resources and stuff, I just wanna point out the one thing, we've set a precedent, so if we're so impassioned about historical things and restoring things to their historical significance, is that where we wanna go? Do we wanna stick with that norm? If what we're doing is we're really trying to accomplish a means to an end, we've already established that the end is the palastro, and this is just the means for achieving that, are we as a community going to throw away something of significance to achieve that means? I often think about the Liberty Bell, and how as bells go, a cracked bell is a worthless bell. We know that one of the most significant icons of America is a cracked bell. It should be in the dump, but it's not. And that, it's no different from what we're talking about here. So I just wanted to point that out.
This is Chairman, I just wanna make a general comment, first of all, to the GIDEA family, thank you very much for your testimony this afternoon, and recognizing that if, in fact, the building is structurally unsound, the safety will take precedence over keeping the structure in place. I really appreciate your perspective, and I want to thank, thank the Chairman for making sure that his pronouncements here in entertaining this bill in a public hearing reflects continuing to memorialize Governor Guerrero and all of his service and all of his contributions to our community, because we certainly, the intent, at least from my perspective, if in fact I were to support it, the intent would never, never be to destroy the building and leave it at that. It is to make sure that we continue to memorialize Governor Guerrero and all of his service, because that's part of history. I just wanna say also that I think Vice Speaker Cruz's statements today, you know, I think it hit a home run. When you talk about the seat of government, you talk about Guam's history, you talk about all of our leaders that have served in one way or another over the course of the last 50, 60 years here in Guam, and I think that that leaves me with a very good, and challenge in terms of a decision, because it's a dilemma, it's an eternal dilemma on my part. Someone who wants to try to preserve our culture as much as possible, someone who tries to, to advocate for preserving our language, and then here, we're discussing the destruction and the demolition of a historical structure of the seat of government. And that, that's certainly gonna be a challenge in terms of what we ultimately do, and I like the idea and the suggestion that perhaps an instructional, a structural assessment, whether the building itself is structurally sound. The other issues with regards to asbestos, I think there are remedies, albeit it may cost a pretty penny, but the question is, do we exchange history for the cost of money? What, at what price are we willing to disregard a structure that has served as a seat of government for the last 50, 60 years? And, and if that report comes back and says, I'm sorry, the structure is just extremely unsound, then I think we already know our answer, because the family, even the family has stepped forward and presented their testimony that, that please continue to memorialize Governor Guerrero, but the safety of the community is certainly an issue that, that has to be addressed. So I just wanted to make that statement, and I really appreciate Vice Speaker Cruz's statement in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to address the committee as well. You know, this is about Governor Manuel Guerrero, but he embodies the representation of our early political development, and many other things that happened in that building. And if that building were not structurally sound, I would highly recommend that we do restoration work, which is covered under the Preservation Trust and can qualify for Preservation Trust funding. So it seems like, you know, whether it's from the right pocket or the left pocket, whatever pocket you're going to get the funding, that you, that should be your aim. If it is not structurally sound, restore the building, because it is very important historically, it's historical significance, it's already on the list of historic places. And again, you know, you need to question why this building is not going through a normal process of review.
Let me get some clarification, it's not listed on the list of historical places.
It is not listed on the Guam or National Register, but it's on the list of historic places to be considered for the Guam and the National Register, to be clear.
They just haven't moved the process.
Yes.
Do you have any idea why?
I have no idea, that's my question, because when the legislature asked the Chairman during his confirmation hearing, what he thought about this building, he outright already, you know, made a unilateral decision that it should be torn down, and that's before he even got on the board. So, you know, you have a board that has all these disciplines represented, you've got people with, you know, good knowledge in architecture and all the other disciplines that there, that is needed to make these informed decision about these historic structures, and yet, we're not going through that process. And I will write to the hires up, because they are getting funding, the Chippaul and the work that they do, you know, get their funding from the hires up that be, and I just mentioned all those.
Mr. Cameron, do you have any idea why this process to get that building on the National, Guam National Registry just kind of stopped?
No, I have no personal knowledge of that, Mr. Chairman, but I believe the Guam Preservation Trust, the folks that are sitting on that board should be asked that question.
There's two different bodies. The trust is responsible for providing assistance, financial assistance.
But I think both, both, both bodies should get together.
We meet, we meet together once in a while. I cannot explain...
I don't have the answer to that, Mr. Chairman.
I think if there's any consolation, then the family has assurance of, at least the members...
Oh yeah, that's, that's one thing we agree to.
That, that's all, that I think you can take, you can take away in terms of continuing to memorialize and preserve your family. But let me just close with this one final comment, that, you know, Vice Speaker Cruz's testimony shared with us in preserving our Spanish heritage, or preserving the beginnings of our government. That, that I think is an easy decision in my, in my regard, with all due respect to Governor Calvo, because he's the one to step forward and propose to restore Palastro, and see what we can do to continue to make and enhance Hagana. But I certainly hope that the Governor can, can keep an open mind in regards to this, because I think that restoration process is certainly an option that could be considered. Not, it could, and obviously restoration could be inclusive of demolition and a restoration of the structure as originally constructed. That, that may have a price tag, but then the question is, does history have a price tag in this case? We wanna continue to preserve a part of Guam's history, and this is where the seat of government is. I'll just close with this, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, and just to add to that, Governor Calvo credits Governor Bernalio for the idea to have the Palacio. And according to the Vice Speaker's testimony here, it was never intent of, of then First Lady Malin Bernalio and her group to have that building demolished. Do you have any references to... Yeah, we can, okay. I wanna know if, I mean, we obviously know that we need to somehow barricade that building to prevent members of the public from going in there, for whatever reason they're going in there for. And Vince and I have talked about this extensively. Is it possible to, to, to address the most immediate concern, that being the safety of the, yeah, is it possible? I hope your answer is, I would think so. Is it, no, here's the question, and I hope your answer is, no, here's the question, I hope your answer will still be, I would think so. No, is it possible to use the hot bonds to at least provide for some kind of barricade? And then, and tell me how much it's gonna cost to do the A&E? We just...
You have to install a barricade.
Well, two things, yeah. What we can do to erect a barricade, and then also what it would cost to do the A&E, and we can amend this bill to reflect that. I think what's important here is, we just can't keep saying that this is the seat of government, and then yet that, that building doesn't reflect how we've evolved, unless that's really...
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just following up on your comments, as a practical matter, we all know it falls under the Guam Legislature, and so we do have to either maintain or keep the safety of the building. The, this bill is probably the best thing that ever happened to the Manuel F. L. Guerrero Building, because it brought to light all these issues that have, that we all know have been before us over the last 30 years. It's probably been, unfortunately, and, you know, we apologize to the family, it's probably been one of the most dilapidated buildings in Hagana. And, and the Vice Speaker said it, then Hope, Senator, I believe you, you mentioned that as well. And so we're at this point now, what, what do we do? Everyone wants to preserve history, you know, but there's, sometimes as a practical matter, you can only do so much, and, and you, you know, there's safety factors, there's new building codes, there's, there's, there's architectural issues, there's structural issues, and, and if those, those practical matters, those practical facts come before us, my advice would be, you follow the professionals. If the professionals say, you know, we can restore it, then you probably listen to them, but if you say, if they come and they say structurally, it's, it's just, it's too cost prohibitive to, to restore, you know, we can, as, as Joe Canata mentioned, we can, you can always rebuild and, and restructure something to, to honor the, what took place in that building. They did, they did that in many places throughout the US. But to, to keep the building in the place that it was, I was talking with the, the family earlier, I can tell you right now, and, and, you know, our families go, go way back, our, our families were governors, speakers, if, and I'll speak personally on this one, if my father's name or mother's name was on that building, there would have been hell to pay many, many years ago. And, and to just, you know, I feel for the Guerrero family, because we're, we're like brothers and sisters, we grew up together. I don't, I, I believe what they're saying is, if, if, if we're not gonna replace, restore it, then let's take it down and start anew, but still, you know, honor, honor our father, and I, I think that's, that's, that's fine as well. But certainly, you know, we, even if we were to barricade it, you know, you're gonna have the tour companies saying, and, and this is a barricaded former governor's office. What good does that do us? Doesn't do us any good, folks. You know, I, I'm sure hard decisions need to be made, but we can always, we can always capture our history in different ways as well. That, that's my thinking. You know, we, we capture it in museums, we capture it in different office buildings, we capture it in books, we capture it in, in, in music, we capture it in, in recordings. But right now, we're capturing it in an old, moldy, dilapidated building in the, in the middle of Hagana. Where's the honor there? Where's the history there? And this has been going on for 30 years. I mean, even, even Vice Speaker mentioned it. He was at fault, we're all at fault, but we need to make a decision soon. What's the rush? Okay, I can tell you what's the rush. I don't want Governor Guerrero's name on a building like that. That's the rush. The rush is, there could be asbestos there, the rush is, there could be lead there, the rush is, you know, a homeless individual can go there, fall off the rail and die, that's the rush. You know, this is the, you know, we've, we've got a renaissance, if you will, of tourism, of culture coming back to Guam, and we've got a new museum, we're renovating the Guam Legislature, we just rent, we just spent over a million dollars renovating the Plaza John, right? Hagana's growing, Chamora Village is really expanding, it's, it's going crazy, everyone's coming back to the, the capital city, and we've gotta do something about the building, folks. And, and if that's what it's gonna take, then, you know, if, if we need to take it down and rebuild, fine, if we can, if we can rebuild it to today's standards, that's, that's fine as well, but we need to get on this. And, and, and where I'm really coming from is, as a practical matter, that building exists today, people are going through that thing. Almost every other day, we're calling Guam Police to help us remove homeless, remove vagrants, so it's a real big security issue. I, I, I agree with, with Uncle Ken Perez, I think, you know, if we've got some funding, whether it be at the legislature or GIDEA, I think we need, we need the, we need some real architectural assessments for the structure, for the feasibility.
No, but then that, that again speaks to what you're saying, something needs to be done, but yet we have to have a feasibility study. If, if we're gonna do a feasibility study, which we should, we have to have a barricade. And you just said, you don't wanna put a barricade.
No, no, I didn't say I don't wanna put a barricade.
No, but you're saying, if you put a barricade there, people drive by, oh, that's a barricaded old governor's office building.
I said that, yeah, but I'm just...
Which underscores how there's a lot of moving pieces here, and we all just gotta continue to be level-headed and rational and putting everything together.
Right, right, yeah.
So don't mistake what I'm saying when I'm asking how much it, would it cost to put a barricade, and if we can tap the hot bonds to do that, because we need to do something immediate, but we also need to do some things where we give in the best information so we can proceed. If they come back and say, $25 million to retrofit, do you, do you still want a building that's gonna cost 25 million, and it's, what's the, what's the goal here?
Yeah, yeah. No, my point being, we shouldn't have a barricade for the next three years.
No, and it won't take that long, so what I wanna do is, we'll recess this issue until the week of the 17th of March, and maybe at 5:30 in the evening, we'll come back, and hopefully you can have some information from us, GIDEA, Public Works, and, and the Hagana Redevelopment and Restoration Authority, and...
On the, on the historic issue, Joe, if, I spoke with Joe Santos, and he had some information on why it wasn't on the historic register, so that info should come from you folks, I believe.
Yeah, that's under Hagana Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, we'll, we'll provide that input.
Yeah, yeah.
In the meantime, could you also see, I mean, if we authorize it, if we could use the hot bonds to appropriate money for the barricade?
We were talking about what the cost would be.
Yeah.
So if we had an estimate, the cost, then we could put the savings in there.
And then, you know, we go in a session on the 17th, but if we recess this issue and come back in a roundtable, as I promised that we would do, maybe that, that week we can have some kind of consensus, and hopefully consensus to put a revised amended bill on the floor that will do whatever we need to do right now, because... the floor that will do whatever we need to do right now, because I think even putting a barricade would kind of be inspiring, because it shows that something's going to be done, but we know how barricades can lead to years of-
Mr. Chairman, I know that you're kind of floundering around here-
Not floundering, I didn't know.
-trying to find out where this money is going to come from, but you have the process. And if this building were to go through that process of review as to its significance to save it or not, then you have the GPT that can fund your barricades to prevent, you know, any further destruction of the building in anticipation of restoration. But there are other alternatives, and how about looking at how you were able to invest 200 million up in Tizen?
You're talking about the government.
I'm talking about Quartec.
Yeah, but you're talking about how the government was able to do that.
Those barracks, those were barracks, same age as this building, and yet you invested that amount of money to restore that building. So, you know, balance these things out, and I know it takes a lot, really, and, you know, let me just, to be very clear, I do not come from a list of governors in my family. I came from very meager backgrounds, meager existence as a child on food stamps, moving from one house to another. I do not claim to have any ancestry that you would ever edify, or that you would ever put a monument for, yet I sit here to demand that our history be respected. I don't have a father who was a speaker, my father was a mere taxi person after World War II. My mother was a bartender. None of my parents were ever involved in government. My children today, not one of them, are employed by the government of Guam, but I am willing to teach our history so that our kids and our people can take pride in it, and using these buildings, and these monuments, and these structures to lift our people up. And, you know, somebody alluded to the homeless and the vagrants, well, that's another issue, and you have big-time problems with that, that we need to help our people.
Just from my own personal reference, Senator, is there anything that I've done in this public hearing for this bill that warrants your upset, or your cause to?
Well, you're only talking about the structure here, and you, none of the discussion, well, little of the discussion-
No, but don't you think the way this bill is evolving, this amended version, really addresses the concerns that you brought up this afternoon? That's why we're going to come back the week of the 17th, so we can quantify how much it'll cost for the study, how much it'll cost for the barrier, so those kinds of things that you raised-
And how much it would cost to write our history, and how much it would cost us social-wise of not taking pride in our history, what it would cost our people to be so, you know, suppressed in our history, I mean, there's just so much out there that are intangible, that affect us as a people, and it's not just how much it costs in terms of quantity, but qualitatively, how would this structure-
Realistically, you put a price tag on everything, you put a price tag on everything, and we can continue to say that that building is so significant, and we have to honor our legacy and how we evolved as a people, but you walk over there and you look at the building, because there's a price tag, and given what we have in terms of financial means to restore that building or do something better than what that building is there, so I think this is how this bill would evolve, to at least triage, put a barricade, you need to go there at night, I drive by there every night, people have taken, they've occupied the place. That's what you want? You want year, two years from now, that's going to be an abandoned building with people taking up residence there?
I don't think that's what anyone here wants, Mr. Chairman. I think, though, that to lean only towards, you know, how much it would cost in terms of money value, and just make that become the main, you know, factor in making the decision is wrong.
Sure.
And I think that you need to look at its other values of restoring that place.
And that's the expectation when we meet again, right? Because you have to respond to those concerns.
And yes, Mr. Chairman, as it was proffered earlier, the restoration comes in many forms, and if that building has to go down, it will go down, and I would concur with the specialists who say that it needs to be abolished, but in restructuring and rebuilding, we have to contain the history behind that, and it needs to be captured in some shape, way, or form, and I concur that that is a very historic area of Hagana. So if the building has to go, if the building goes down, when we rebuild, we need to be able to still put into place all those characters that creates this history that's very rich.
Anything else?
The group that's not here is the Historic Preservation Review Board, and they need to be here. An state historic preservation officer needs to be here.
It's two different groups, one out of Parks and Recs and the other one, yeah, okay. Well, I certainly look forward to, and thank all of you for this very lively and spirited discussion, and I look forward to us coming back the week of the 17th. Thanks.